Yeah, I think crushed that. I think that was all I have. It was property in my late twenties, I would say.
Mm-hmm.
It was probably. Property in the mid-sixties, early sixties.
That sounds about right.
And then they changed the way you were, they held the elections because back then you had, depending on population, you had a supervisor and an assistant supervisors.
Mm-hmm.
We had four members. We had the largest group.
Yeah.
Then the next election, they changed it to where it is now. And I wouldn't have been able to get elected, so then I ran for the city council and got let. Which I've often referred. Were you set?
My clock, yeah, my clock says two, so.
Is that?
Yes.
Meeting will please come to order. This is a duly advertised meeting of the Joliet Zoning Board of Appeals. In our capacity, we hear petitions for relief from the strict provisions of our city ordinance. In matters of this type, the decision of this board is final in respect. It does not go to the mayor or the city council for any further action. If you disagree with our decision, you do have recourse in accord of record. We also hear petitions for variations of land use. In matters of this type, we act as an advisory board to the mayor and city council, make any recommendation either for or against it. The final decision on land use is made by the mayor and the city council. Secretary, call the roll, please.
Ms. Stanford?
Here.
Mr. Lassio?
Here.
Mr. Mitchane? Mr. Nachtree?
Here.
Mr. Rigs?
Here.
Ms. Rohr? Mr. Hennessy?
Here.
First order of business would be the approval of minutes from November seventeenth.
Motion would be in order?
So move.
Second.
We have motion second to approve the minutes. Pull the board.
Ms. Stanford?
Aye.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. Nachtree?
Aye.
Mr. Rigs?
I'm staying.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Next order of business would be citizens to be heard on agenda items. This section is for anyone wanting to speak regarding items listed on the agenda. Please also know, we do allow you to speak when the item is called officially. But if there's anybody that wants to speak on an agenda item at this time, they can do so for four minutes. Seeing none, we could move on to old business public hearing. And we have one under old business. And that is a tabling request. The petition number is 202247. Petitioner is Emerald Coast LLC. Property owner is GW2211 Jefferson Joliet LLC. Location is 2211 West Jefferson Street, and this is a variation of signage request. Petitioner originally wanted to table this to the January nineteenth meeting, but subsequent information has been found, and they prefer to go and push this out to June fifteenth, 2023 meeting. And staff is in favor of that request.
Motion be in order?
Motion approved to the June eighteenth.
Second.
Close the floor, please.
Ms. Stanford?
Aye.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. Nachtree?
Aye.
Mr. Rigs?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Next order of business under new business public hearing. Petition number 202272. The petitioner is VFW2199 Stone City Post. Property owner is the same as that. The location is 124 Stone City Drive. Request is for variation on signage. Under purpose, the petitioner is requesting a variation on signage for a sign that does not, does not face a public way. The zoning board of appeals makes the final decision for this variance request. Under site-specific information, the subject lot was established with the approval of the Stone City Commercial Park subdivision, Unit One, in 2006. Subject lot was also annexed and classified to B3 General Business Zoning District in 2006. Stone City Post 2199 VFW building was erected shortly thereafter. Surrounding lots created by this commercial subdivision have remained undeveloped. Under surrounding zoning land use in character, to the north is B3 General Business, undeveloped. To the south is A1 Agricultural, unincorporated Will County, and that's undeveloped also. To the east is B3 General Business, undeveloped. To the west is B3 General Business, and there's a stormwater detention area. Under applicable regulations, 4717.21 signs and 47-17.213BB criteria for granting a sign variation. And you could refer to the attachment for that. Under discussion, city regulations do not allow signs that do not face a public way in the B3 zoning district. Stone City Post seeks approval to erect approximately fifty square feet of signage on its east elevation to increase visibility of the post from Illinois 53. Therefore, variation on signage is required to allow this signage. There currently are no other wall or ground signs on the property. A conceptual sign elevation is attached to the staff report. Under conditions, we have none, and that concludes our staff report.
Petitioner present? I swear you in. You swear the evidence you're about presents the truth under penalty of law?
Yes.
Your name and address, please.
My name is Skip Buckbauer. My address is 1581 Pinehurst Drive, Joliet, Illinois.
Any comments you'd like to make?
Uh, yes, uh, the, get an idea of what we are. We are, uh, we've been in, uh, in this Joliet for eighty-seven years, serving the public, the community, and our veterans. Uh, our mission is to try to help as many people as we can with what we, with resources that we have. Uh, this sign will enable us to further our goals on here. And we're also a voting poll place also as well. And we have sometimes people looking for where we're at because they'll drive right past us. So the sign will provide more than just benefit for us, but also for the community.
All right. Any questions by the board? Is there anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Or anyone oppose? Chair is going to close the petition, floor, and ask the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion second to approve the petition. Pull the board.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. Nachtree?
Aye.
Mr. Rigs?
Aye.
Ms. Stanford?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Years ago, I don't know how long you've been down there, but my brother, one time, was sergeant of arms at that post when he got back from Vietnam. At Timmy Hennessy, I don't know if you know him or not. Anyway, I vote aye. Good luck, buddy.
Thank you, sir.
So that, uh, motion was for approval. Uh, next item is petition number 202273. Applicant owner is First Choice Auto Sales, uh, Buhar Shabani. Uh, location is 115 North Center Street. And this request is a special use permit. Under purpose, the applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow an automobile storage lot for inventory for their existing used automobile sales business. That applicant owns First Choice Auto Sales located at 201 North Center Street. Subject of the special use request is the parking lot at 115 North Center Street. Per the City of Joliet zoning ordinance, uses related to automobile sales may be allowed as special uses by the mayor and city council with the advice of the zoning board of appeals in accordance with Section 47-5.2. Under site-specific information, the subject property is a 6,270 square foot lot that contains an existing parking area. Access to the property is from the alley that runs along the south side of the site. Property is zone B3 General Business and has been a parking lot for many years. The nineteen-sixties and nineteen-seventies, it was part of the Kenny Motors Car Dealership that operated at 104 and 116 North Center Street. Surrounding zoning land use in character, the zoning and land use for the adjacent properties are as follows. Uh, to the, uh, all sides is zone B3 General Business. Uses to the north is commercial. Uses to the south is residential. Uh, to the east is commercial and to the west is residential. Under applicable regulations, Section 47-13.2AG, special uses, B3 General Business District, and Section 47-5.2C, criteria for issuance of the special use permit, and you can refer to the attachment. Under discussion, the petitioner, the owner of First Choice Auto Sales, is requesting a special use permit to use the property at 115 North Center Street to store extra inventory for their business. First Choice Auto Sales is a used car dealership located at 201 North Center Street, approximately one block north of the proposed storage lot. Business has been at that location since 2018. Site at 201 North Center Street is around 6,000 square feet and contains a small office building and eighteen parking spaces. Petitioner purchased the lot at 115 North Center Street in 2021. Their proposed site plan, which is attached, shows sixteen parking spaces. The lot would only be used for the storage of vehicles. No sales would be conducted on the property. The property at 201 North Center Street is zone B1 Neighborhood Business, and it has a variation of use, approved in 1987, that permits used car sales at the site. This variation of use were ever revoked, the proposed special use permit would also be terminated of the subject site. The city will require that the public sidewalk along Center Street and the alley apron be replaced as a condition of approval. Additionally, the parking lot will be required to be repaved and striped in accordance with city regulations. There is an existing fence around the property which the petitioner installed in December 2021. Under conditions, if the zoning board desires to approve this special use permit, uh, the following conditions would be included. One, that no sales or repair of automobiles shall be conducted on the property. Two, that no inoperable vehicles shall be stored on the property. Three, that the property shall be repaved and the parking space is marked in accordance with an approved city plan prior to utilization, utilization of the lot. Four, that the public sidewalk adjacent to the east side of the property and extending to the south side of the alley and the alley apron shall be replaced within six months in accordance with the requirements of the Public Works Department. Five, that the special use permit shall terminate if the variation of use for 201 North Center Street is revoked or if the use is abandoned for longer than one year. Six, that the special use granted shall herein terminate in labs unless a billing permit or certificate of occupancy is obtained no later than 180 days. Seven, should the property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing and a possible revocation of the special use permit. And that concludes our staff report.
Petitioner here?
Good afternoon.
I swear you in, gentlemen. You swear the evidence you're about presents the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Do you have your names and addresses?
Sure. My name is Patrick White. I come in attorney with Sasa and Arnold and Show'em Back in Orland Park, 9501 West 144th Place.
My name is Bouyar Shabani. And my address is 704 St. Louis, Joliet, Illinois.
Okay, any comments?
You know, none really, other than to thank you for having us here today. We also like to extend our thanks to the staff who's worked very well with us and been very cooperative, helping us along the way through the applicant process. As just read into the record, uh, the use here is to park inventory on it, so it's not in the strict sense, use of a parking lot. These are our customers coming in and parking here and then going to the 201 location. This is for when, when sales are good, when inventory is good, to have extra inventory parked there. Um, as you can see from some of the pictures, you know, it definitely is in need of repaving. So I think that if this is permitted and allowed, it's going to look so much better with nice new black top and lines painted, plus the sidewalk there, uh, bordering the front of the property is, is in a pretty sorry state. So that's going to be redone as well. I think it's going to make the, the frontage look much nicer there on Center Street. And certainly, we're available for any comments should you have any questions or if there's any audience members that have any questions or comments to make.
Yes, staff, do we have any other off-site locations? I mean, we have a multitude of car dealerships and lots in the city. Do we have any others where we allow off, off?
Um, none come to mind. You know, we've had some inquiries about doing the same thing, you know, um, to get, uh, just storage lots for car dealerships, you know, that can't contain all their cars on site. You know, it helps in some ways where they're, they're not parking where they shouldn't be and crowding, overcrowding their lot in that manner. So, um, we've had inquiries, but none, none come to mind that I could think of right now.
I can think of reasons for and against this. I'm, I'm only afraid of setting a new precedent and then having every, this multitude of dealerships and this car lot, everybody, all of a sudden requesting, this is going to get out of control. Setting a new precedent, uh, that's my only concern. Is there any other questions by the board?
I'm, I'm wondering, may I respond?
Sure.
Just really quickly, as, as Mr. Torrey mentioned in his staff report, initially, the car dealership located directly across the street from this had used both.
I know the, I know the, I'm familiar with the area, yeah. Any other questions? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Anyone oppose? Gentlemen? Want to leave, White?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I swear you in. You swear the evidence you're about presents the truth under penalty of law?
So help me God. Um, Tom Osterberger, 111 North Ottawa Street. In your audience today, you have Mr. and Mrs. Talmage. They own the old Old Charlie's building directly across O'Nite Street. You have Mr. Bob Sol, who owns, uh, also a building, I think, previously owned by the Kennys directly across the street, which he's restored, painted white, looks nice. Uh, and you have Frank Farenbacher, who, uh, owns the complex that was formerly the Weber Dairy. Uh, and they can give any comments they'd like, but, uh, I was asked to speak specifically on this use. Um, let me go in reverse real quick. The, the Kennys did own the slot, and as we remember, in the sixties and seventies, it was used to park cars. It was never used, it never had the authority to do that. It just took place, so. Uh, and they have been closed, Ed, you'd be better than me, probably since nine, eighty-nine, maybe?
If I remember right, Ms. Luann Kenny had a Irish claw and gift shop.
But the dealership sold that hard corner eighty-nine, ninety, maybe?
Probably, yeah. It's been, I think all she does now is store, or was storing, uh, sports cars and convertibles and stuff.
Right, right, but, so that lot hasn't been used for that purpose for thirty years. Um, I don't know. I tried to find another case. Uh, if this lot were directly across the applicant, next to the applicant, I would understand, and, I'm not sure I'd be standing here. That'd be an expansion of his lot. Um, the staff report says it's going to be used for a storage lot. The staff report also says that he has, uh, the, he has eighteen spaces on his lot. When I looked at the aerial, the aerial I looked had twenty spots. Um, I know this area well. I go by all the time. The, um, truck that drops off his cars is often on a night of blocking the entrance to Mr. and Mrs. Talmage's place, really close, uh, really tight. The idea that this would be a storage lot, that you would go and get a car and bring it over and show like it's a can of soup, it's not even possible. So we know what's going to happen. This is an extension of the lot. I'm not blaming staff. They were asked, they were told what, what the applicant says it's going to do. People are going to be walking across the street, down the street, to look at cars. So essentially, what you're doing is you're creating a car lot with other businesses in between. Uh, and, and we just object to that. The, the car lot as it is, is just jammed. This is going to be another car lot. It says sixteen spaces. Who knows how many will be? I guess it really doesn't matter, but it's not good planning. You know, when Terry Darcy expanded his, he spent a lot of money to buy to expand next door. He didn't go down the street and have cars and people walking back and forth. This isn't good planning. We would ask that you object. It's not good for the other people who've put tens of thousands of dollars into their building to have a business straddling them on each side. So we would object and ask that you recommend denial.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? Going forward. I swear you in. You swear the evidence you're about presents the truth under penalty of law?
So help me God.
Name and address, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Frank Farenbacher, and my family owns 407, 409 Jefferson Street, which used to be the old Weber Dairy Center. And we've owned it since, uh, 2006. And again, what you brought up, Mr. Chairman, as far as you're setting another precedence in the city of Joliet. My family's been here over a hundred years, and, uh, we just keep up chopping up things, chopping up things, and that bit. When you look at the, where the car lot is now, I drove by there a half hour ago, and he's got a nice big truck sitting in the aisle there right now. So it's not in his, uh, designated parking space. I have my office down there, and I'm there two or three times a day, uh, five, six days a week. And I've caught his photographer over the photographing vehicle so he can put them online on the back of our property. And a tenant called me. He said, hey, I can't get into my building because there's a guy here photographing, uh, cars. And he said, come back in a half hour, that, you know, I'm, I'm busy photographing. So I ran down there and I said, you know, who's the guy? Who you talking about? And he said, oh, the guy over there, the car dealer. I'm hired by him to photograph cars. So it happened about three times, and I said, hey, you know, I'm in business. You want to rent property from me? That's fine. But don't encroach on other people's property. Uh, Mr. Torrey said they erect the fence, uh, last December. You look on the files there, he still has tags on each one of the posts that he hasn't taken down in over a year. All right, yes, the lot needs work, but there's gravel pits all over. There's, you know, and I saw with my own eyes, this summer, you had cars parked there, and you're over there selling cars out of that lot. So, you know, you're in violation, okay? There's leaves there that haven't been picked up yet. There's weeds all over. You could take a weed eater and clean the lot. Even though it needs resurfacing, you're not being a good neighbor to your neighbors around here. So the big issue that I look at is, you know, you're changing up of what's going on. Like Mr. Osterberger said, is, you know, precedence, what's going on? And I know you folks did this a lot with the trucking as far as, hey, we need more tax revenue, so let's build a building on there, have them build a building on there instead of just trailer parking so we can get more property taxes out of the lots. So I'm requesting, asking you to deny this, uh, motion.
Thank you. Anyone else? You swear the evidence you're about presents the truth under penalty of law?
I do.
Name and address.
My name is Ron Talmage. My address is 1202 West Parkfront. Me and my wife own 119 and 117 North Center, the, the building between there is Old Charlie's. We've put a lot of money in this building, Brian, and we, you know, unbelievable amount of money. And to have this happen is just, it's just cutting our throats right, right at the beginning of our business. We just opened, and we're struggling over this. I have pictures on my phone here, Your Honor, from January all the way up till present date. And there's more than sixteen cars there. There's, there's, there's twenty-five cars in this lot right now. And I'm asking, I'm asking you for the forsake of us, for us to survive our, our tavern, to turn this petition down because it's, it's hurting us. We have, we, we have two car lots between us. That's what it's going to amount to. And I'm asking you to turn it down.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Do you care to rebut?
Uh, thank you again. Patrick White, I took for petitioner. Um, direct, directed to the very last comments that we had here, I, I don't understand how his, his use of this lot is hurting his business, the, the bar that's on the corner. I mean, there's a, there's a variety of uses that, that the petitioner could use this lot for, right? There's a variety of permitted uses, including building a building here, having a different type of business here, um, in which case you'd have even more parking issues and problems in the immediately adjacent area that I think would impact the businesses even, even worse. Um, some of the comments about being a good neighbor and where the cars are and the look and the weeds and things like that, a lot of that is going to be remedied by this, right? I think, again, you can see from the pictures, the condition that it's in. The entire lot will look, you know, have a brand-new blacktop surface with sixteen, sixteen spaces in there. And again, a lot of these also issues being brought up by the various objections are, are frankly code enforcement things, right? If, if, if Mr. Shabani is operating and using this lot in violation of either this special, special use permit and the conditions that are being attached to it or any other portions of the Joliet code, there's a way to enforce that. Um, but his use is permitted within the zoning district. Um, I think it is, it is good to have a, a good and thriving business at the 201 location, and this is beneficial to him and the reason why he bought this property, knew that it was a, you know, a special use and was something that could be, you know, approved and recommended by, by this committee and by the, by the city council. I don't know if you wanted to address anything separately, unless you had a specific question for Mr. Shabani.
Any questions by the board? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
You've been heard, sir. I'm going to close the petition to the floor and ask the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to deny.
Second.
We have motion and a second to deny the petition. Pull the board, please.
Mr. Nachtree?
Aye.
Mr. Rigs?
Aye.
Ms. Stanford?
Aye.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
So this will go to the city council on January seventeenth with the recommendation for denial. Moving on, next agenda item is 202274 and 202275. The applicant is Cass Street Storage LLC. Status of the applicant is a contract purchaser. The owner is Cass Street Commercial, A Route 30 Mini Storage LLC. Location is 1735 East Cass Street. This is a variation of use and a special use permit request. Under purpose, the petitioner is requesting a variation of use to allow indoor self-storage facility, a B3 General Business use in a B1 Neighborhood Business Zoning District and a special use permit, uh, to allow the same. An indoor storage facility, um, at the location of 1735 East Cass Street for the zoning ordinance, Section 47-13.2A. Indoor storage facilities may be allowed as special uses by the mayor and city council with the advice of the zoning board of appeals in accordance with Section 47-5.2. Under site-specific information, the 6.7 acre subject property was annexed into the city in 1996 with the former Wooded Creek Trailer Court. Trailer Court was subsequently vacated and the land was cleared. The subject property has been vacant since 2004. 2006, the property was subdivided into the current two-lot configuration under the Cass Street Commercial Park subdivision. Subdivision was created to develop a mini storage facility at that time for which a special use permit was granted in 2004, and a commercial strip center. Neither the mini storage facility nor the commercial strip center was built. Property is surrounded by residential uses to the northeast and west. Series of commercial and industrial uses that are located in the county can be found to the south across, uh, Cass Street. Generous tree canopy, which can provide enhanced screening of the proposed use, can be found along the northeast and west sides of the property. Petitioner intends to. Petitioner intends to leave these tree lines unimpacted. Conceptual site plan of the proposed indoor storage use has been included in the staff report packet. Concept plan shows an indoor storage facility, which would be developed over two separate phases totaling 78,685 square feet in size. On-site stormwater detention would be provided in a walled-off basin located within the front yard of the property. Parking would be located in front of the main building. Additional drive-up stalls would be located along the building's south and west sides. Access to and from the site would be limited to one point of access off Cass Street. Final building design will be required to conform to the city's non-residential design standards and landscaping and screening regulations. Site would feature a 20-foot wide landscape area with a 3:1 berm along the south side, Cass Street frontage. The east and west sides of the subject property would each require a 5-foot wide landscape area. Landscaping is required along the property's north side. Since the north, one quarter of the property will remain undeveloped due to the area's steep topography. The proposed development would be required to connect to city water, which would include a 760-foot extension of an 8-inch public water main along Sterling Avenue from near Mohawk Street on the west to the eastern property line of the subject property. Since the closest sanitary sewer main is located over 1,000 feet from the subject property, the development will be required to connect to the East Joliet Sanitary District facilities on Sterling Avenue for sanitary sewer service. Surrounding zoning land use in character to the north is County R5 Single Family Residential. To the east is R4 and County R5 Woodlands and Single Family Residential. To the south is County C2 Commercial and Light Industrial. To the west is County R5 Woodlands and Single Family Residential. Under applicable regulations, Section 47-17.28, criteria for variation of use, 47-13.2A.I., special uses, B3 zoning district, 47-5.2C, criteria for issuance of a special use permit, and you can see the attached petition. Under discussion, approval of the requested variation of use and special use permit would allow the development of an indoor self-storage facility located at 1735 East Cass Street. The B1 zoning district is intended to provide uses designed to supply a majority of the daily needs of those living in the immediate vicinity. Parcels within these districts are intended to range from 2 to 4 acres in size, containing 5 to 10 uses, and are spaced no less than 3/4 of a mile apart. While the B1 zoning designation is appropriate for this area, given the adjacent residential uses to the northeast and west, the proposed indoor self-storage use more closely aligns with pre-existing commercial and light industrial uses that can be found along this segment of the Cass Street corridor. With respect to the requested special use permit, staff finds that the petitioner has established evidence that the criteria outlined in Section 47-5.2C of the zoning ordinance will be met with the proposed use and conceptual site plan. Proposed use will be located over 100 feet from the Criswell Court neighborhood to the west with existing woodlands preserved between subject property and Criswell Court to help buffer the proposed use from the neighborhood. Additional landscaping along the front and sides of the subject property will enhance the aesthetic value of a currently vacant piece of land. Furthermore, the proposed use should not dramatically increase traffic volumes to the area, which is already situated upon a heavily trafficked commercial corridor. Site will be required to conform to the city's non-residential design standards, landscaping and screening regulations, and onsite lighting standards. Under conditions, if the zoning board desires to approve the special use permit, the following conditions would be included, and those conditions should be for special use permit and the variation of use request. One, that the business shall be registered with the city clerk's office. Two, should the property be declared a public nuisance, it shall be subject to a rehearing of possible revocation of the special use permit. Three, that a city planning division approved landscaping plan be submitted by the petitioner with the future building permit plans before installation. That the design of the main building complies with the city's non-residential design standards. Five, that the onsite lighting does not exceed .5 horizontal foot candles as measured at each property line. Six, that the special use granted shall here and terminate, and lamps unless a building permit or certificate of occupancy is obtained no later than 180 days. And that concludes our staff report.
Let me go forward. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
So help me God.
Name and address.
Jeff Pellock, 36W 538 Michael Court in St. Charles, Illinois.
Go to the floor.
Okay. Well, thank you for hearing my project today. You know, my name is Jeff Pellock. As I just mentioned, I'm with Revco Ventures and Cass Street Storage. We're a real estate developer and home builder and commercial contractor for over 35 years. So we're very solid in the building world. Again, it's 6.7 acres that we'd like to hopefully get approved today to move forward and build this 78,000-square-foot building. It will be all under one roof, and there will be no outdoor storage. There was a lot told about the grade and the tree buffers and stuff like that. We, again, we plan to try to maintain as much of that tree buffer as we can, but we have to clean it up, of course, make it look nice. It'll provide a natural buffer to the project. The natural grade obviously runs from the north to the south, and that's where the detention pond would be up along Cass Street, kind of driven by the property. We intend to have basically about 480 total lockers within the building. And some of those are on the outside so that people with larger items that can't get inside the building have access to put their storage from the outside. It will have an office in the front of the building that will be there for the management staff to run the facility on a daily basis. We have two large unloading doors that allow people to pull inside and load or unload into the storage facility outside of the weather so they don't have to be in the rain and trying to screw me around, trying to, you know, deal with the weather. We will have 20 parking spaces that was mentioned. The building materials will be masonry, architectural metal panels, and glass. And the balance of the building will be corrugated metal panels that are insulated. Let's see, what other high points do I have for you here? We have a security system that basically, we have keypads. We plan to put a chain-link fence around the entire facility, encompass the parking area and make it all safe. And you'd have to go through gates with keypads, and the doors would have keypads on there as well. And that gives us the ability to track who's coming and going within the site. So we know we have basically a trail of who's coming and who's going in the property. We want to put, you know, obviously, there's, I'm not sure how you all want to handle the emergency situations, but if there were an emergency, we can provide the police or fire with an access code to get in, or we can put a knock box on the front of the gate that has a key so that, you know, the police and fire could get in if it was an emergency. I'm not sure how that was going to be handled, but I'm sure that will be in the details later. And we do plan to meet all the ordinances, as mentioned. And we will also provide garbage dumpster inside the building for the tenants' use. And another high point is we'd like to have the building solar-ready so down the line that solar panels could be potentially added at a later date. Our rules in the storage facilities are, you know, there's no storage. On this one, there's no storage outside, no chemicals or hazardous waste, no combustible materials or perishables, weapons of anything of that nature can be in the units. And then, of course, there's no persons or animals can live within the facility. And again, we have two full-time people and one part-time person that will be managing this facility on a daily basis. And our hours, we're projecting hours to be somewhere between 7 and 9, but those could vary based upon how business goes and how activity is. Other than that, I think I covered most of the high points from our side. I do have my engineer here in case there was some engineering questions or anything, but I'd like to ask for your vote today.
Do you have any other locations in Joliet?
I do not.
The reason for my question, it seems like in the last couple of years we've had multiple requests for this indoor storage. What is the big demand for this all of a sudden?
There's a lot of demand for people that, you know, they don't have room in their garages or their basements or their homes to, you know, and when people are on the move from transitioning, you know, from one house to another or, you know...
I realize that's been going on all the time, but it just seems to be a greater demand lately.
It's a very sought-after asset class in the commercial real estate world. So, you know, I'm sure part of that has a big driving factor to it.
Just curiosity, that's all. Is there any other questions, Mr. Board?
Yeah, I have. One point of clarification I'd like to make. There's a little disconnect in the exterior material. Metal panels are not allowed for exterior materials. So Jeff, you want to get with your planner and discuss that? Make sure you understand that the exterior material, where visible, needs to look like brick or stone.
Okay, so there's no decorative metal panels?
Only in some details, but not as a majority of your materials, so.
I'll definitely make that note and talk to the architect.
Follow-up.
Yeah.
Want to make that a condition?
We have a condition that he meets non-residential design standards. So that's in there already. And our non-residential design standards do not allow metal panels, so.
Any other questions, Mr. Board?
I have a vague recollection, maybe you would remember, Jim, that after the mobile home facility was demolished, I remember going by there once after a heavy rain, and the site was pretty wet. It was maybe under 18 inches of water. And, you know, it's low anyway, so it may be useful to get a hydrologist or whoever it is to look at how to protect the facility once it's been...
Yeah, we're required by law to manage all the stormwater from our properties and the higher land, so.
Except it's higher land all around you there.
Yeah, so we got to take in their water and accommodate for it. But that's what we'll deal with in engineering.
Any other questions, Mr. Board? Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Chair closes the petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
Motion to approve.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the petition. Call the board, please.
You could do both.
I'll do both one time?
You could do both together, yeah. So this would be for 202274 and 202275.
Mr. Rigs?
Aye.
Ms. Stanford?
Aye.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Hennessy?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
So this will go to city council, January 17th, with the recommendation for approval.
Very good. Thank you, Jim. Have a nice day.
Thanks.
Petition number 202276. The petitioner is Olympic Signs. The property owner is Gabriel Chuckman. Location is 2707 Plainfield Road. Request is a variation on signage to allow three wall signs that do not face a public way. Purpose, the petitioner is requesting a variation on signage to allow three wall signs that do not face a public way located at 2707 Plainfield Road. The zoning board of appeals makes the final decision for this variance request. Under site-specific information, the city council approved the two-lot US Route 30 Kellogg Street Minor Subdivision, Unit 3, in March 2020. Chick-fil-A constructed a restaurant on the lot at 2505 Plainfield Road. Sherwin-Williams is in the process of constructing and painting the supply store on the .47-acre lot at 2707 Plainfield Road. Vehicular access to the subject lot is from existing internal drives that service the entire surrounding retail center development. The subject lot shares ingress and egress as well as parking with the Chick-fil-A restaurant lot. The lot in question is Zone B3 General Business District. Surrounding zoning land use in character to the north is B3 General Business, multi-tenant retail center. To the south is the same. To the east is B3, and that's the Chick-fil-A restaurant. To the west is B3, and that is the Applebee's restaurant. Under applicable regulations, 47-17.21 signs in Section 47-17.213BB, criteria for granting a sign variance, and you could refer to the attachment. Under discussion, city regulations do not allow signs that do not face a public way in the B3 zoning district. Olympic Signs, acting on behalf of Sherwin-Williams, seeks approval to erect signs on the east, south, and north sides of the building in order to increase the store's visibility to customers traveling from the adjacent retail centers and to facilitate safer vehicular circulation in the area. These elevations face internal drives to the surrounding retail centers and are not public ways. Therefore, variation on signage is required to allow these signs. Should the zoning board of appeals approve this variation request, the property will have 112.48 square feet of sign area, which is less than the 177.62 square foot maximum permitted sign area for this property. Conceptual building elevation, sign elevations, and all to survey are attached to the staff report. Under conditions, we have none, and that concludes our staff report.
Chair. Do you swear the evidence you're about to present is the truth under penalty of law?
Yes, I do.
Name and address.
I am Guy Dragasik, Olympic Sign Company, 1130 North Garfield, Lombard, Illinois. Mr. Torrey basically outlined everything, so I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Do we have any questions? Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Chair closes petition to the floor and asks the board for discussion and a motion.
I move we approve.
Second.
Call the board.
Ms. Stanford?
Aye.
Mr. Lassio?
Aye.
Mr. Noctree?
Excuse me. Aye.
Mr. Rigs?
Aye.
Didn't make it use it late so long. I thought we'd rush it through for you. Aye.
Thank you.
Nice presentation.
Thank Mr. Torrey.
So that item is approved, and that is final here at zoning board. Moving on through the agenda, number seven is old new business. Not for final action or recommendation. We have none. Under eight public comments, this section is for anyone wanting to speak regarding non-agenda items and are allowed a maximum of four minutes. I don't see anyone in attendance here, so I think we conclude no one wants to speak on non-agenda items. And nine would be adjournment.
Motion to adjourn would be in order.
Now let's stay here. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to abstain the meeting, to adjourn the meeting.
Aye.
Aye.
I do that every time.
Aye.
Aye.
Ten would be wishing you a Merry Christmas.